To Tom's left is Brandy Spangler, who is our recording secretary. And to Brandy's left is Jenny Chambers, who is the Director of Planning and Community Development, as well as the Director of Public Works. She has many hats. To my right is Commissioner Andy Hunt-Housen. Good morning, Andy. Andy with the new glasses. We have our imaginary friend, Nico Hash. I understand he's answering a phone call or something, but he will be joining us. And Roger Balls, our Chief Administrative Officer. We will start this off with the consent action items. Roger, do you want to take it away?
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. On your agenda today is Item 2A, which is public meeting minutes for July 29 and 31, August 12 as well, 2025, and staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is Item 2B, and that's Resolution 2025-93, declaring county property surplus property, and staff recommends approval of that item as well. Commissioners, those are all the consent action items for you to consider today. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Any comment from the Commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment on these matters? Seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I move to approve consent action items 2A and 2B as presented by Roger Balls.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent action items. Is there any further discussion or comment from the Commission?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor of approving consent action items 2A and 2B as presented by Roger Balls indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next on our agenda, ooh, bid award. Courthouse Roof and Gutter Replacement Project by Audra Zachral. Audra. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Audra Zachral, Assistant Director of Public Works. On August 12th, four bids were opened for the Courthouse Roof and Gutter Replacement Project. The project generally consists of replacing the courthouse roof, which has two different roof system sections, and also replacing the roof edge gutter liner. Funding for this project has been budgeted in the fiscal year 2026 Courthouse Building Capital Improvement Plan budget. Staff recommends awarding the bid to the low bidder Summit Roofing of Missoula, Montana for the base bid amount of $368,815, and authorize the Chair to sign all applicable contract documents. Are there any questions on this item?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, I believe we had heard the presentation when you opened these. So, is there any, let's see, is there any public comment? That's what I needed. Seeing none, we could, I would entertain a motion for, or I mean a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move that we award the bid to the low bidder Summit Roofing of Missoula, Montana for the base bid amount of $368,815, as presented by Audra Zachral.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the bid award for the courthouse roof and gutter replacement project as presented by Audra Zachral. Is there any further comment from the Commission?
Chair Payne?
Yes.
Just for those that might not have been paying attention, last meeting when we talked about this, there were four bidders. This is the low bidder, and we take some time in between Audra and team, look at the bids, make sure that they meet all of our requested specifications, as well as have been done properly and by law, and bring back a recommendation here. So that's why we are kind of cruising through this. We've already been through most of the process. This is kind of the last step. So, thank you, Audra, and appreciate it. Just wanted to give some explanation for those that might not understand what we were doing here. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Thank you, Andy. And it's my understanding, as an attachment to the presentation given to the Board of Commissioners, there is a table showing the different amounts of the bids, and I assume those are on the Internet on our website page someplace and available should someone be interested. However, Audra, you've been doing this long enough, you should have probably done a pretty good job. Okay. Did I already ask for the idea to speak? Do we have a motion?
We do, we have a motion.
Okay.
That was just comment, yep.
Then, and the Commission, anything, Tom?
No.
Okay. It having been moved and seconded that we approve Action Item 3A, the bid award for the courthouse roof and gutter replacement project, as explained by Audra Zachral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda, Resolution 2025-90, approving the bylaws for the Board of Directors of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District, and Audra Zachral will again present this.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I remain Audra Zachral, Assistant Director of Public Works. Also before you this morning is a resolution to approve the updated bylaws for the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District Board of Directors. The previous bylaws were adopted back in May of 2011. There are three updates to the bylaws. The first is to Section 6, the terms of the directors. That section has been updated to clarify that the elected member and the Health Department representative shall not be subject to the four-year term. The second update is to provide consistency in the document language, and instead of using Board of Directors, it has been updated to Board Member or Board Members. The third update is to the Public and Private Meeting Section. It was updated to remove the requirement of having the legal staff approving the determination of a closed meeting. These bylaws were reviewed, discussed, and unanimously approved by the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Board Members at the April 10, 2025 meeting, and signed by the Chair. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-90 for the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District Board of Directors bylaws. Are there any questions?
I have just, and I'm sure I know the answer to this, but we are held to a pretty high standard for declaring a meeting closed to the public, at least the Commissioners. And I know that if we don't follow this rule, we could get sued. I would have a concern that the Public versus Private Meeting Section that was amended to remove the requirement of having county legal staff approve the determination of a closed meeting. Did anybody discuss that with our friend Nico?
Thank you for that question, Chair Payne. That was a recommendation by our legal staff. The Board gets to determine that the privacy interests of the citizens or employees will be protected and outweigh the public's interest or right to know. If the meeting's closed in advance of the meeting, the agenda will reflect that. So it's not that the closing of the meeting is going to not be taken into consideration. There's going to be factors that the Board has to follow. It's just that they don't then have to call the county attorney's office and get permission.
Okay. All right, works for me. Okay, is there any further comment from the Commission? Andy?
Chair Payne, just, if I could, just process-wise, this is something that is a regular occurrence or every, this has been 2011, but every few years, we're looking at these bylaws and making sure that there's consistency and any updates needed, those kinds of things. So just a few seconds on process, how this brought potential changes to the Board and discussed them and all of that.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, Chair Payne, Commissioners. The bylaws are the operating guidelines for each of the Boards, and we have been at Public Works looking at all the Boards that we oversee and updating them to make sure that, not only that we're following what we need to be following with our Boards, but that the Board members who change every four years for this Board and some of the other Boards have a little different timeline, but that they are also understanding and following what the Commission outlines for them to do for the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Chair Payne.
And now we could ask the opinion of Mr. Nico Hash. What do you think about that, Nico? We are discussing Agenda Item Number 3B, approving the bylaws for the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District. And one of the concerns I had, and Audra has addressed it, was the ability of the Board, now wait a minute, they've removed the requirement of having the county legal staff approve the determination of a closed meeting. And you know how I am, I'm nervous about getting the county sued. So if a Board closes a meeting and somebody doesn't think that it's appropriate, what is your position on that?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, so regardless of any bylaws needing to run it through our office or not, that's certainly appropriate for that to be removed from the bylaws. As always, our advice would be, if a Board needs to close a meeting for privacy concerns, that they go through the statutory process. So that's not necessarily a yes or no from our office. They still need to go through all of those appropriate processes. At the end of the day, too, I can't envision too many situations where the Solid Waste District's going to have to have a closed meeting, because as I understand it, they don't have any employees, there's not really a lot of personal or private information that exists within this Board, so.
Okay, thank you, Nico. I appreciate your input. Any further questions from the Board or from the Commissioners? Tom?
No. Well, I guess we just, it's good to look at them every once in a while, because the legislature does change the laws from time to time and make sure that we're up to snuff on them, so, very good.
I'm also concerned that the makeup of these Boards changes as you, and, well, we'll have to hope they pass on the knowledge as they proceed. Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, could we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-90, approving the bylaws for the Board of Directors of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District, as explained by Audra Zachral.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Action Item 3B, Resolution of the 2025-90, approving the bylaws for the Board of the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution as presented by Audra Zachral indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Action Item 3C, Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Northwest Technical Services, LLC, again presented by Audra Zachral.
Thank you, Chair Payne. This contract before you is with Northwest Technical Services to perform commissioning services for the mechanical systems at the courthouse and the detention center. Commissioning is a process that ensures a building and its mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are designed, installed, tested, and are operating as intended in order to optimize performance, energy efficiency, and occupant comfort. This contract is for time and materials not to exceed $41,930, and work will be completed by November 30 of 2025. Budget authority for this work is in the fiscal year 2026 Buildings, Courthouse, and Detention Center budgets. Staff recommends approval of the contract with Northwest Technical Services, LLC for $41,930, and authorize the Chair to sign. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Audra.
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Just again for explanation services, we're not just doing this for fun, there's reasons behind it. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the why, and, you know, the courthouse and its age, plus the detention center next door's had recent remodels, and those two buildings are tied at the hip, if you will, hooked at the hip, and they have to be working together in some of the systems anyway, many of the systems, and updating them, making sure we're efficient is important. So maybe just build on that a little bit about the why. We've been thinking about this for a while. This is not off the cuff, it's something that's been kind of in the work, so.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. Chair Commissioners, yes, this has been on our mind for a while. We did just complete an improvement to the boiler system that is located in the detention center. The boiler system is shared by both the courthouse and the detention center. It provides hot water for the detention facility, and it provides heating in the wintertime for the courthouse. And with the improvements that we made to the hot water system or the boiler system, we need to perform the commissioning to make sure that the design that was done and then constructed in the building is going to operate the way that we need it to for both of those buildings. So that really is the ultimate reason why we had to do this or why we want to do this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Further question, Tom? Did we, did you put this out for bids, or is this just a vendor that you can trust? Or what is, how did this work?
Thank you, Chair Payne. We did perform a limited solicitation. It's under the $80,000 threshold that requires a public invitation to bid. So we requested quotes from three different entities or contractors that could provide this service.
Okay, I thought there was an amount, but I was thinking it was $25,000. Obviously, I was wrong, so good thing you're here to guide us along. Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Northwest Technical Services, LLC, as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Northwest Technical Services, LLC, as presented by Audra Zachral. Is there any further discussion or comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We've got a new person up here. The next item on our agenda is Item 3D, Resolution 2025-91, to levy and assess the Walter Drive Rural Improvement District Number 2015-8, and will presented by Jessica Marcus, Jessica Makas.
Thank you, Chair Payne.
I sometimes put an extra R in her name. Sorry.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $220 upon each property within the Walter Drive Rural Improvement District. There are 23 benefiting properties, and a total of $5,060 will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the RID. The Walter Drive RID was created in 2015 to maintain Walter Drive from Canyon Ferry Drive to Emily Lane. Maintenance provided by this district includes snow plowing, grading, soil stabilization, and other maintenance and repair as necessary to preserve improvements. The maintenance assessment was set at $132.17 per property per year. However, this is unsustainable to provide the services listed above. An increase to the assessment will ensure annual maintenance in the Walter Drive RID can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district. This is a total increase of $87.83 per property per year for a total assessment of $220 per property per year. A community meeting notice was mailed out to all benefiting property owners, and an evening meeting was held with residents at the East Valley Fire Department on July 31, 2025, with a total of six residents in attendance. Legal notice of the increase in the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on August 9 and August 16. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I have a question. The maintenance assessment was set at $132.17 per property per year. What year was that set? Was that when it was first created?
Chair Payne, yes, that was in 2015.
So it has not increased for 10 years?
Chair Payne, that's correct.
All right, and my other question is, you held a public meeting, 23 benefiting properties, and only six people showed up?
Chair Payne, that's right. So we hold, it's an informal meeting where we invite all of the benefiting property owners to discuss the need for an increase. We generally try to do that in an evening setting, usually at a nearby public location like a fire hall or a school or something like that, recognizing that a lot of people are unable to come to commission meetings at 9:00 AM on a workday. So we try to do that to explain the need for these increases before holding this formal public hearing, so that we have a setting where folks can ask questions and we can talk about any other concerns in the district. It's a nice way to communicate and build some points of contact through these districts and also for those people with our county staff.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions, Tom or Andy?
No, I think you handled it.
Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-91, to levy and assess the Walter Drive Rural Improvement District Number 2015-8, as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-91, as presented by Jessica Makas. Is there any further discussion?
Just, I really appreciate the fact that we've taken the effort to explain to the people what needs to be done. It's pretty obvious you can't go on forever to, you know, 10 years, we've had a lot of inflations in that period of time. Reasonable adjustment for that period of time, and it looks like some good attempt to try to communicate with everybody and let them know what's going on. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Andy? All those in favor of approving Action Item 3D, the Resolution 2025-91, to levy and assess the Walter Drive Rural Improvement District Number 2015-8, as presented by Jessica Makas, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next on our list of adventures, Action Item 3E, Resolution 2025-92, to levy and assess the Boundary Street Contribution Rural Improvement District Number 1997-4, as presented by Jessica Makas.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Again, for the record, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you'll be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $39.51 upon each benefiting property within the Boundary Street Contribution Rural Improvement District. This RID was created in 1997 to proportionately contribute to the maintenance of Boundary Street within the East Gate 2 Rural Improvement District. There are 50 benefiting properties, and a total of $1,975.50 is proposed to be assessed annually. The maintenance assessment for this district was set at $13.75 per property per year in 1997. Likewise, the maintenance assessment in East Gate 2 was set at $75 per property per year since 1979. The assessment for the East Gate 2 Rural Improvement District was increased during public hearing on August 19, 2025, to a total of $250 per property per year. Therefore, we're recommending a proportional increase to the Boundary Street Contribution RID. To be clear, Boundary Street has met the end of its functional life, and the Public Works Department will be working with benefiting properties to present options for rebuilding this street in the future. Until that time, though, we will continue to provide basic maintenance services such as pothole patching and snow removal. The assessment increase in East Gate 2, as well as the recommended increase for this contribution district, take that minimal maintenance into account. This is a total increase of $25.76 per property per year for a total assessment of $39.51 per property per year. A community meeting notice was mailed out to all benefiting property owners, and an evening meeting was held at the East Valley Fire Department on July 31, 2025, with five residents in attendance. Legal notice of the increase in the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on August 9 and August 16, 2025. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Payne?
Andy?
Thank you. Jessica, as we discussed at the August 19 meeting, Boundary Street is in rough shape, we all agree with that. It's at the end of its functional life, as you've just presented. So this is, this contribution, increased contribution is not to improve Boundary Street, it is kind of just maintain the tough situation we're in already, but to keep it kind of where it is until we can have that kind of longer-term solution established. And there's some draining and drainage and engineering stuff that's been going on as well in the neighborhood and trying to figure out how these streets can work the best. So if, just kind of from an explanationary perspective, if folks are thinking, well, they're increasing our deal, and this road's really bad, and, you know, are we going to get a higher level of service? It's really not what this is about. This is to kind of maintain status quo until we can fix that fully. And recognizing that street really needs to be essentially completely rebuilt. So I just wanted to make sure that that is clear to folks, that we're not intending for this to be the fix. This is kind of the, I don't want to call it a bandy, but it is, I mean, it's kind of just maintaining status quo for the moment, right? And can you talk about what the process might be to get to that point of a clear, long-term fix for this street? Thank you.
Absolutely. Chair Payne and Commissioner Hunt-Housen, thank you for that. And it is really important to point out that we recognize the condition of Boundary Street right now, and it is in bad shape. I don't want to stop completely because we don't have another solution in place. So until that time, we're proposing a shorter-term solution here to continue to make this road passable, to continue to patch potholes as they rise, which is constant, and also to keep the snow off so that people can travel the street. Moving forward- Moving forward, though, this will take a lot of future public engagement to decide what the best course of action is for the people that benefit from this road. So taking into account what that public opinion is for how best to, you know, improve this road in the future. And so what we'll do, if we continue with a rural improvement district mechanism, is we would determine the number of benefiting properties that using Boundary Street, which has expanded since this contribution district was even created in the late 90s. And we would hold, I would say probably evening public meetings with folks to determine how best to move forward. There would be different options presented, you know, just thinking about how we generally do this process. You know, one would probably be turning that road back to a gravel surface and looking at the price point there. Nobody likes to go back to gravel, but usually it is the cheapest option. So that would be maybe option one. You know, option two, you know, a full asphalt rebuild or something, and maybe some potential options in between. So pricing those out, determining what that cost of financing, that initial improvement would be, plus then the maintenance of upkeeping that improvement over time. Those options would be presented to anybody that would be benefiting, you know, from that potential improvement. If folks wanted to move forward with one of those options, we would have to create a new rural improvement district to have a new improvement out there. That's how these districts work, right? There's an initial improvement, and then we maintain that improvement until the life of that improvement is no more. And so that's obviously the situation we're in right now with Boundary, but it will have to take a lot of community engagement out there to decide what people would like to do moving forward. But again, what we're proposing today is only to keep that passable. Until such time, we can present options for folks in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks, Chair Payne.
I'm not as clear on it as I want to be. So basically, we're putting Band-Aids on this poor old road. I've had more phone calls and communication from people about this road than any of the ones we've done that we've been discussing over these assessments. If you are to set up a new RID, could you kind, I mean, what, first, you have to throw this RID out, and can you tell me what the process is? And approximately, is it going to take six months or 10 years or somewhere in between?
Sure. Chair Payne, short answer, somewhere in between. But anyway, moving forward, though, you know, I recognize, right, Boundary is in bad shape. I probably also get the most calls about this one as well. The way the process works is we would present these options. Folks would select the option that the majority of people are okay with. We would create a petition document to be circulated by the residents, by the property owners. They would have to circulate that petition. The county does not do that part. They would have to receive a minimum of 20% support on that petition. With something that's expensive, I always recommend getting as close to 50 as possible, but at least we have some gauge of where the public is. And at that point, we can take that petition and present that in a public hearing with a resolution of intention to create a district. That's that first step. To be clear, that petition is not a statutory requirement. It's not required by law. It is a Lewis and Clark County policy, just to gauge that public interest and where we sit with that. At that point, we'd have a resolution of intention that would go to the commission for decision. Assuming that that passed, it would open up comment and protest period. Everybody who would potentially benefit from that district would receive legal notice by mail. It would also have to be published in the newspaper. And then we would take public comment, protest during that time period. We would gather that. Part of that legal notice is also the next public hearing, which is the public hearing where the commission will consider the creation of that district. If greater than 50% of benefiting property owners protest the creation of that district, by law, it may not move forward. If less than 50% protest the creation of that district, it's up to the commission to decide whether or not to create it. If the district is created, another round of legal notice is mailed to all benefiting property owners. We schedule another public hearing. That notice also has to be published in the Helena Independent Record. And then we'd have a third public hearing where we consider actually the levy and assessment of that district. And so if that resolution passes, that's what adds that assessment, the improvement part for the financing of the new improvement, plus that maintenance component that would then be added to the tax bill on the next available tax bill. That process generally takes about three months once we have the petition back. So that petition part of it is really the piece that can go really fast, or it can take a really long time, depending on how much engagement there is within a particular neighborhood or community. But a lot more to come there, and certainly, as I said, it would take a lot of community engagement.
So the people who are bearing the burden, whose taxes are going to go up, we want to make sure they are in favor of this, so they're not saying, "You raised my taxes", correct?
Sure. Yes, Chair Payne. So with these special assessments, it's different than a general tax, right?
Yes.
We have a different process by law that we have to follow when we create these, and it does require quite a bit of public engagement. It's not a fast process by any means, but the intent of it is to be very transparent.
Okay. One further question. Looking at the map you have in front of us, the portions that are in green are part of the current RID, is that correct?
Chair Payne, so the green boundary that you see is the East Gate 2 boundary. What we're looking at here is the portion in brown, and so this is the Boundary Street Contribution District that, when it was created, used Boundary Street and is considered a contributing, benefiting property for that district.
Okay. But there are benefiting, or it appears that to the north of Boundary, there are a lot of, there's lots up there that are benefiting. Would they be included in this?
Chair Payne, that's a great question. So I don't know what this map looked like in 1997, when this district was created, but my guess is it's very different.
Yeah.
And so if we were to create a contribution district today, or if we were to create a new district to improve Boundary, all of the benefiting properties that using Boundary would be included in that proposed Boundary. When we create these districts, we cannot add additional properties without going through that creation process from the start. So new properties that would be added to a district have to go through that same process and have that same opportunity to protest and have their voice heard before the commission, before being added. So we can't just add properties that we assume benefit from a district, once that district's created, without going through that whole process all over again. Again, these districts are not nimble. They're transparent, but they're not, it's not nimble. So it is quite a process to go through that.
So if they were to add in the, maybe 10 properties that are not currently included in the RID, the ones that are still in white, wouldn't that help split up the cost of fixing Boundary?
Chair Payne, yes. So you have those additional properties between, like, Helena, you know, that corridor just above the green shape, and then you also have additional property further to the east that's also not included. So yes, you will have additional benefiting property here that's not shown as a benefiting property on this map today as it exists.
And they're benefiting properties, but they're also supporting properties. So this is, the people who are using the road and have the benefit of a lovely paved road, whether they live on the north side of Boundary or the south side, they're still, if they're going to benefit from it, then they need to help pay for it.
Chair Payne, if we move forward with a future RID, yes, we would include all of those benefiting properties. I will say also that the RID process is what the county offers, and that's what the county can administer by law. If people do not want to go with the Rural Improvement District model moving forward, districts can always dissolve a district and move forward with private maintenance in the future if they so choose. So, you know, the RID is available, the county will help with that option, but private property owners also have the option of setting up an HOA or some other kind of private road committee to collect money and maintain their own roads if they so choose.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been very helpful. And your timeline, I think that's an interesting to keep in mind. This is not five years. If people get behind it, they can move this along, and they could have a much better road set up in probably not 2026, but maybe by 2027?
Chair Payne, it could move that quickly. So our hope, now that we're getting some staff into this program, we've been short-staffed since December, but as we build those, that staff back up with our construction coordinator positions, once we can get some estimating on these numbers and these options, we would hold public meetings in the evening to try to start that community engagement process and go from there. And at that point, we'll see how it goes.
Any other questions from the commission?
No, I think you filled in very well. It is really a public-driven process. People can do or not do, as the majority of them require or request. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this matter? Oop, look out.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair. My name is Joe Coenauer. It's C-O-H-E-N-O-U-R. Again, I'm the President of East Gate 2 Homeowners Association. I do rise in support of this. This is a baby step on a journey that we started about 15 years ago. And so we're finally taking two big steps here at the end. Thank you for your vote last week of increasing our RID in East Gate 2. This is one more step towards hopefully fixing Boundary. As Commissioner Hunt-Housen said, Boundary isn't failure. We're fixing potholes upon potholes, and last year, they replaced, you know, 20-foot sections here and there of failure. The problem was, when they built this back in the late 70s, they didn't have the technology and the knowledge in how to put asphalt down. Asphalt's got a 20- to 30-year life expectancy, and we're well past that. And so I do ask you to support this resolution.
Thank you, Joel. Is there any further public comment, please?
Chairman Payne, Commissioners, I live on the corner of Boundary and Winchester. My name's Judy Owens, and I'm in support of this just because the way this road's been fixed, it's a safety issue.
What was the corner other than Boundary?
Corner of Winchester and Boundary.
Okay, thank you.
So I just am for this because people come driving down on the patched part of the road the wrong direction. So we need to do more to fix this road. So whatever we can do.
Great, thank you. Is there any further public comment? Ooh, we got a hot one here today.
My name's Lori Hedges. Hello. I live on Winchester. I live one house in from Boundary on the other side of the street, and the roads are horrible. I've already had to replace three tires in the time that I've lived there from the potholes. It's worse when it rains because you can't see them. So that's been my problem, but I am definitely in favor of moving forward with all of this.
And would you be one of the people helping, oop, I'm not supposed to be asking you questions.
Would I be willing to go door-to-door to get signatures? You betcha.
All right. That's what it's going to take. It's, one person can't do that. Our department can't. So it's pretty much up to the homeowner.
We've already discussed it.
All right. Well, I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Oh, there is another one.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Shields, and I live at 2670 Sheridan, which is in the brown section, which is where the Boundary RID is.
Sure.
I am 100% in support of increasing our rates for our, excuse me, our portion of maintaining this road. I do just want to clarify just a few things. That the road that they're looking to fix is where the green section is. It is not anything up and above where the brown section starts and goes up. Oops, sorry. Also, the properties that are in white are not contributing, even though they do use it. And there's a lot of them up to the east there that also do not contribute. I have been out in that area since 96. And again, we've not had an increase in our rates at all. So it's about time. And, you know, putting a Band-Aid on top of the Band-Aid, I would just rather fix it all now, if we can, if we could get the support. But I do want to have consideration of the other people that do have an opportunity to use that road, and they may or may not. In the past, I was here probably about 20-ish years ago, trying to get our street, our portion of Boundary paved. And there's a lot of opposition in that area of, they want it fixed, they want it better, but they don't want to pay for it.
But they don't want to pay for it.
They don't want to pay for it. But, you know, nothing is for free. I went door-to-door, did petitions, we had meetings with the county out at East Gate School. I had doors slammed in my face. So I hope this community, after all the complaining that has gone on for years and years and years, that people will finally get behind this because it is absolutely needed. The people that live, you know, to the southeast corner there, you know, they can say, "I use Remington. I don't want to pay into Boundary." But, you know, this whole community uses that street at some point or another. They're either walking, they're kids, they're riding their bikes, they're driving it. It's a community. We all need, I think, come together and actually, you know, make it better for everybody. So I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? I, I'm gonna, I'll give you a warning. You know, we have, in my neighborhood, we've got streets that are actually paved, and before they were paved and they were full of potholes, people did not speed. And now they go 50 miles an hour down our street because it's nice and smooth. So, you know, be careful what you wish for there.
Yeah, but they come down the road too. I think they're going to skip over the top. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-92 to levy and assess the Boundary Street Contribution Rural Improvement District number 1997-4, as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the commission approve Resolution 2025-92 to levy and assess the Boundary Street Contribution Rural Improvement District, as presented by Jessica Makas. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Next up, Item 3F, grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Tracy Foundation, to be presented by Jenny Chambers.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works and Planning Department Director. Here on behalf of the Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council and also your Heritage Preservation Officer, Pam Wettardo, the Heritage Tourism Council received notice of $10,000 grant award from the Tracy Foundation. This grant is to be used for the purchase and install a propane parlor stove for heat and exterior. install a propane parlor stove for heat and exterior propane tank at the 1872 Unionville School. Volunteers will provide a $5,550 cash match and also $1,286 in a labor match to assist with this project as far as the coordination. Once the grant award is approved, the project will then begin, we'll have to do a couple contracts to put in place to get this work accomplished, with the goal of getting the project done by fall of 2025. Heritage Preservation Officer recommends approval of the Tracy Foundation Grant Award today for your, for your benefit. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Any questions from the Commission? Tom, Andy? Ooh, you're very convincing. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none? Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we accept the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Tracy Foundation as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Tracy Foundation. Is there any further discussion?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
If I could. Thank you, first of all, and thanks to Pam and the gang, and thank you to the Tracy Foundation. It's great. I'm glad that they have taken interest in this project. It's been a multi-year project. We've invested quite a bit of dollars into it, and there's been significant volunteer and local community efforts, hours and hours and hours put into this project to renovate the Unionville School. And I'm glad we're getting to the point where it will soon be more usable, and lots of activities are planned and have been planned there. And so glad that we're still engaged in the project, and just wanted to thank the Tracy Foundation publicly. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Anything else?
I think it's worthy of note, all the effort the local community up there has put in, into this project. And they've have already, and it looks like they intend to do even more. So it's a very positive thing for the, for the community up around Unionville.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this?
Did I already do that?
You can never have too much public comment. Okay. Seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Tracy Foundation, as explained by Jenny Chambers.
Second, again.
Did I already do this?
Yeah, there's a motion, the second on the table.
Why didn't you stop me? I trust you guys.
Tried, but you were talking, so.
They just set me up, so I look like a doofus. Well, now that you've had your fun at my, my expense, would you like to vote on this? All those in favor of the, both of the standing motions to approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Tracy Foundation signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Let's see, this is, action item 3G, Resolution 2025-94, declaring the alley in Block Two of the Hotel Edition a county road, as presented by our friend Crystal Ness from the Planning Department.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. Crystal Ness Development Services Supervisor for the County. This morning, you have before you a couple of resolutions. We've actually had to do this in two resolutions because we've got two additions that come together in very close proximity to one another. I've, this, these additions are off of Williams Street, so we're on the west side of Helena. We're dealing with this alley here, which is in the Hotel Edition, this alley, which is in the Seamer Park Edition. We actually just vacated the alley to the southeast of here in a previous action that we had before the Commission a couple of weeks ago. So we've got a petition to abandon these two alleys. The first is in the Hotel Edition. Before we can abandon an alley, we have to make it a county road. When these, when the Hotel Edition was final platted in 1889, these were platted as rights of way. So the boundaries of the lots do not go to the middle of the alley or the middle of the streets. These are actual rights of way, not owned by the property owners. They are not easements. So in order for us to abandon these, we have to first make them a county road. And that's the action that we have before you this morning, is to make the alley in Block Two of the Hotel Edition a county road. That is Resolution 2025-94. And I've included a nice little map with your staff report showing where that alley is relative to the Hotel Edition, between Green Street and Spring Street.
Chair Payne?
Which is...
Andy?
Which is, which is this east-west alley.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, just wanted, for explanation purposes, the why again, you know, why we're doing this. We went out and looked at it, and it, these have never been built, at least for the most part. And just explanation a bit, I guess, of why we're doing this, why we're entertaining this.
So on June 19th, Commissioner Hunthausen, Jenny Chambers, myself, and Kevin Horn from the Public Works Department went out and did our inspection of these alleys in this vicinity. As Commissioner Hunthausen just explained, these alleys were never constructed. We actually have a number of encroachments that are now, have been built into these alley rights of way. And once we have the public hearing for the actual abandonment of these alleys, then the alleys will be divided between the property owners and absorbed into their respective lots.
Okay. I have a question for you, Crystal. So those alleys are being abandoned, and the remaining property will be given to the adjoining homeowner, correct?
Yes, Chair.
So aren't the homeowners getting free land? What is this, a homestead operation?
Chair Payne?
Are they going to be paying more taxes because of this?
Chair Payne, they will be paying more taxes. Their lots will actually increase. I think that the tax increase is probably going to be minimal because their lots are actually going to not increase very much. As we all know, most of our property taxes are based on improvements. Most of these improvements that are on these particular properties already exist.
Okay. When people stop me in the grocery store and ask these questions, I want to have a ready answer. So thank you, Crystal. That makes good sense. Is there anything else? Are you done?
No, I'm done with, with this one particular alley in this Resolution 2025-94.
Okay. And we have to do these one at a time. Any further questions from the Commission?
No.
Tom? Andy? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I move to approve Resolution 2025-94, declaring the alley in Block Two of the Hotel Edition a county road, as explained by Crystal Ness.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Resolution 2025-94, as presented by Crystal Ness. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Resolution 2025-95, to declare the alley in Block 16 of Seamer Park a county road. And this will be presented by Crystal Ness.
Chair Payne, Commission, Crystal Ness Development Services Supervisor. As I have previously explained on the above item, this is the north-south alley that is in the Seamer Park Edition. The additions actually meet on the top line of these lots. And so we have this alley in one addition, we have this alley in another addition. So once again, in order for us to abandon this alley, we have to declare it a county road. Given all of the encroachments and all of those sorts of things, we will have a public hearing at some time in the future to actually abandon these alleys.
There is the name of, the applicant on both of these resolutions is the same. Are other people going to be impacted by this other than just the applicant?
Chair Payne, yes, there will be. All of these property owners have signed the petition for abandonment.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I needed. Any further questions? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-95 to declare the alley in Block 16 of Seamer Park a county road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Resolution 2025-95, as presented by Crystal Ness. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution, as presented by Crystal Ness, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And now we have come to the part, Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comment on Any Public Matter Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission That Is Not on the Agenda Above. Come on up, we're waiting for you.
My name is Joanne Gores, G-O-R-E-S. I live in, hello, Commissioners and Chair. I live on Mill Road, and I live west of McHugh, all over to Green Meadow. We have had consistent problems with speeding on that road. We live, our front yard faces the road, and across from us is a field. There are several houses on the north side of Mill Road, from McHugh to Green Meadow. Several driveways, lots of children, people riding their bikes, people walking, their dogs. And we, I have clocked, people going 60 miles to 70 miles an hour on that road. It's like they hit McHugh. And I noticed a gentleman that lives on the other side of McHugh on Mill, he's got a little green guy out there, and he's had, there was a sheriff sitting there for a couple days. I think they're trying to catch him, but I tell you what, it's extremely dangerous. They, you guys got signs posted on either end, 35 mile an hour. And my theory is, is that once they put the roundabout in Lincoln Road when that construction was happening, everybody discovered Mill Road? And they come down Green Meadow, cross at Mill Road to get on to Montana. Well, you know, I just, I just think we need help. We need more visible, like, either those flashing signs saying slow down or something, because seriously, we have big, huge trucks with construction equipment on them, going 70 miles an hour. We've got sports cars racing up and down that little stretch of highway. And I don't know if, it's because they see the big field, and they think, oh, you know, we're on a rural road now. And the Valley Gardens is no longer there, and so, you know, there's nothing to slow people down. It's just constant madness. During the day, it's not so bad. During the night, in the evenings, it's really bad. And also, the amount of heavy equipment that's being brought onto that road now has made, actually, that brand-new road you guys just paid for is getting ruts in it, from the weight of those, those heavy machinery that are running up and down that road. And I don't know what the story is. I don't know why it's gotten so busy. Of course, Helena has grown. We have a huge subdivision off of, off of Green Meadow right there. Not huge, but small. It's just a safety issue. And I don't know why people think they can all of a sudden just hit the, hit the pedal and go really, really fast from McHugh to Green Meadow, but it's pretty constant. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I'm hoping that you guys can, the signs don't seem to be working. I don't expect an officer to be sitting there all the time either, although if they did sit on the side road on dredge, they'd probably catch quite a few, you know, because there's a nice place to hide there. When you're sitting right on Mill, they'll slow down as soon as they see you. But, yeah, I would really...
Well, that would help.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, I don't expect deputies to be there all the time. So we need, we need some sort of awareness or something that holds people accountable for their speeding habits, because it's not improving. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. I am aware that in a more rural county than Lewis and Clark County, they have an old patrol car which is parked, nobody in it, it's just an old car, and they, it's parked right at the intersection where people go too fast. And the people who live, the locals know it's a dummy car, but the people going through, who are the ones who, I don't know if they tend to drive too fast, but it slows them down. Okay, enough on that. Is there anything else we should talk about? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.